All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm calling to order the special counsel meeting of the Jackson City Council. Today's date is September 10th, and the time is approximately 2:02 PM. Are there any opening remarks, colleagues? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start with agenda item number one.
Order accepting the bid of the Jackson Airport Authority for the FY 2025/2026.
Wait, hold on, that's not what I have as number one. Order accepting the what? Do you have something different than what I have? You said bid. I hear bid, okay, all right. Let's start that over then.
Order accepting the budget of Jackson Airport Authority for FY 2025/2026.
I've been moving in properly second. Colleagues, any questions or comments about this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Six zero. All right, thank you. Item two.
Order acknowledging receipt of FY 2025/2026 budget for the Jackson Heinz Library System and authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $1,947,008.00 to said system.
Second. Been moving in properly second. Colleagues, any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Six zero, thank you. Item three, you still waiting?
Yes. We can go ahead and proceed, okay. Resolution approving and adopting the municipal budget for the fiscal year 2025/2026.
Second. Been moving in properly second. Colleagues, any questions or comments about this item? Yes. Mr. Parkinson?
Was the, we talked about the $200,000 grant to be used in Human and Cultural Services for special programs and events throughout the year. Was that added to the budget? We talked about a $200,000 grant for events such as the Doggone Festival or the Jackson Music Awards or other similar events. We've had it, we've had such a program in the past. I believe at some point, we reduced that, and we talked previously about putting in approximately $200,000 for that. Has that been added?
Ms. Tim says she believes so. I know we have talked about it. We will verify that 250 is there, or whatever number the council wants. I think you talked about 200, or whatever number you tell us, I will ensure that it is in this budget. So, what, what number, is 200 the number that the council is comfortable with? As we have talked about before. Okay.
Mr. Parkinson, Sharon Tim's deputy CFO. I will verify that before we get out of this meeting.
Ms. Timms, can you please come on up?
Mr. Grisette, you want her in the front chair?
I want her in the front chair. We need all of these budget folks on up here up front. Thank you, Ms. Timms. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Stewart. Are there any more questions or comments about this item? Mr. Foot?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a question for the, for the Finance Office regarding parking meters. On, it's on page 102. Parking meters begins on page 101 of the budget book and extends down to 102. The only expense it shows is $12,276 for group insurance. And of course, we went through the exercise with outsourcing the parking meters to the contractor that's been putting in and, and doing, putting up the kiosk and then actually going around and collecting the money. And it was supposed to be a revenue generator. I don't know if it is or not, but does, anybody have any information on, on how that program's worked out? And, and who actually do they answer to? Who's the overseer of the contract? Just to see how the city's doing on that.
Mr. Griselle, I can answer that question in part, if that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I can't answer who's overseeing the contract at the moment, Councilman Foot. I will say there's been money generated. I have reviewed the contract, but not in depth, and it appears the arrangement that the city entered, the money we're making now is going to pay for the actual parking meters. And I don't know that we're generating revenue until we have paid off the capital investment of the company that has contracted with us. Having said that, I think that is, again, like many other contracts we've discussed in the last four or five weeks, working through the budget, one that we have to see is really favorable to the city or not moving forward. I'm setting aside that folks don't necessarily understand how to use the system. That's a different issue. But just from a revenue generator, as I've glanced over the contract, I get the impression that we're repaying whatever the capital investment was for the meter company before we're generating any revenue for ourselves.
Okay, so I, so it comes under the oversight of the mayor's office, or your, your, that's, that's fine with me, I, the...
Well, let me say this, I want to be as clear as I can be. I'm not sure where it falls now.
Okay.
I understand I'm gonna be put up for confirmation on September 24th, and should this good body decide to confirm me, everything's gonna be answerable in the mayor's office.
Okay.
This independent of trying to chase down who has an answer for something is unacceptable to you as the council.
Follow-up point, the, I know the contract has generated a lot of complaints from people who were frustrated trying to figure out how the kiosk works when they're trying to get over to whatever appointment they may have or what are in the downtown area. I don't think it's good for business downtown if, if people leave frustrated with parking meter situation. So, I look forward to y'all's assessment of the, how it's worked so far, and I wonder if, if you're satisfied with, if it, if it might be better rather than being a budget item down here with, as it is, that, since JRA already manages the parking garages we have, if it might make sense for the parking meters to fall under the JRA's oversight, since they're overseeing the parking garages at this point in time. But I, I look forward to whatever y'all conclude on, on the contract itself. Thank you.
I'll give what legal department will review that contract and bring back specific highlights or options for you in the month of October.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments, colleagues?
Are we taking the motions now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, before we get to the, to a motion, I'd like to just ask the question of finance, and that is, and actually, CEO, last week, I presented some equipment needs, both for maintenance of riderways and also, excuse me, and also blight initiatives around the city. And I was wondering if administration had a chance to, to review that and integrate that into the, the budget.
Review, yes. Integrate, no. I can't stress enough how much I think this budget needs to be flat, and I can't be any more candid than saying, even at a flat budget, it's hard to have confidence in numbers that have not been independently verified in several years. So, we're aware of that list. Obviously, we're working on that internally. We think to satisfy that list, Councilman Hartley, we do have some purchases that we're in the process of making, such as for the landfill already. We think it's best for us to go ahead and move forward with the auction item and deadlining equipment, and then have you as the council say when we deadline this equipment, non, non-police equipment, any other equipment, you tell us restrict those funds for the purchases that would help public works.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I am, I am concerned about this. Public Works is a basic city function, clean streets, and the other thing that this equipment bring about is basic to our city functioning. And I believe that we need to make a priority out of this in our budget always. And so, I will continue to advocate and push for, for that. This equipment is long, long overdue. We have neighborhoods that are going offline every week, streets that are going off every week or every month, and we, we need this. And when people ask me, and I've been putting them off, I've said, okay, well, the city's getting around to it, city's getting around to it. If we don't have equipment, we'll never get around to it, if we don't have a plan. And so, I asked that this be a regular portion of the city's budget. Public Works needs money. I mean, we can't clean up the side of the streets, the trees growing up, because we don't have anything to clean it, other than handheld. So, I asked, you know, I respectfully asked that we find the money to take care of our basic need of keeping the city clean and reducing the blight. That's, that's an investment. That's all it is. It's an investment into us. It's giving folks hope, it's giving them what they need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Ms. Quaid?
I just have a question. What percentage of this budget is salaries?
I'm gonna be honest with you, I would have to do that, do the math on that. A lot of your budget is salary, but I would have to do the percentage on it to give you that, but I can do that for you.
Okay. Is it more than 50, you think? Probably, okay.
Let me clarify that slightly. I don't believe more than 50% of the budget is salaries. I do believe more than 50% of the general fund is salaries.
Yeah, exactly.
And I make that distinction because we're gonna have to contract some employees in this city in the upcoming budget year. When we do that, we need to look at whether we're actually generating general fund money, savings for this council to balance. If you're paid from a grant, taking you off of the payroll doesn't help our general fund. So, I think your question is spot on, and I've asked for not only that breakdown, but then a breakdown into, I need to know whether every employee is general fund, grant fund, or a combination thereof.
So, the, the salaries in this book can be grants versus really city money?
They're a combination of both. It would, you'd have to know the exact person. So, when you see a salary line, let's say $300,000, $250,000 of that may be general fund, $50,000 may be coming from grants or something else that supplements those salaries. For example, the JSU grant we, y'all approved yesterday that we'll receive, we get $10,000 a year for five years to put on some position salary.
So, my question is, why aren't salaries that are grant-related taken out and not in this budget in a general budget? They should not even be in this book if they're paid for.
By law, they have to be in there.
Well, they can be in here, but they can be asterisk or something that we can know the difference, because it looks like we actually have money that we don't have money that is, well, we have the money, don't get me wrong, it's coming from, from a grant. But once that grant ends, the money ends, so the salary ends. So, it looks like the city is in a better position than we are.
When you see, Sharon Timms, if I may, when you see the 6115 in your budget lines under salaries, redistributed salary, a lot of times that are, that is grants. Not always, but like Peter said, you would have to know specifically, a lot of your CDBG is, you'll see the 6115. It's because they are grant-paid, 50% of their salary, 75% of their salary. So, you have to know which employees is which. So, that's kind of an idea for you to know when there's a grant probably involved.
I appreciate you.
All right, Ms. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Turn the tables, and I know this is a tight, 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 tight budget.
Yes, sir.
I got some amendments, and keeping that in mind, some of the amendments I have, they shouldn't go into effect until around January, when we have money available. Keeping in mind that we know that some of these orders should have been done, it's not done. So, that means that the Budget Chair will year-round keep meeting and going through monies and everything else. We must give these employees a pay raise. We must give employees a pay raise. These pay raises, I'm suggesting, will start in January. If the mayor's office sees it fit to be later, we understand. Once this budget starts in October, we still have October and November before we really start seeing some money coming in, November, late November, December, for taxes, where we can make sure we got, everybody's being paid. In the past, sometimes we had to go take a loan through banks and everything else for that shortfall that we're looking at. So, my first motion is to pay raises. Loans call cost of living, we'll use y'all's expertise, but 3% for the least paid, you'll make the determination whether that's 17,000, 18,000 and below, 2% for middle and 1% for top. Leaving that to the discretion of, of the mayor's office administration. Y'all be able to see the money and know how much we're talking about, because I don't know, and we don't have the people who could give us what dollar amount we totally looking at, but we must have pay raises for these city of Jackson employees. Some say they haven't had a pay raise 10 years and longer, and we got to make sure with everything we're trying to do, we have pay raises somewhere around the top, especially with reoccurring funds. So, I saw movement, Mr. President.
All right, it's been moved in properly second. Clerk, you got the motion? All right, is there any questions or comments about the amendment? Mrs. Foot?
Thank you. The, can anybody with, in the Finance Department, give us a idea of what the cost of this, of Mr. Stokes' amendment would be? Can somebody give us a ballpark idea of the dollar amount that would result?
Mr. Jackson just mentioned to me that he wasn't comfortable giving us an estimate. He can do us a memo in fairly short order. I would suggest if you consider this, you limit this to the lower-paid and middle-paid individuals. Let's be candid, if you're making $75,000 a year or more, you don't need a 1% raise, and you're already better on the higher-paid end of the city. So, my only request would be, I know you don't know the amount, and you would prefer to know that, if you do this, let's focus on the truly needy employees in this city, and there are truly needy employees in this city. Whatever number you would pick, whether 75, 60, 80, I'd just say put a cap on it, and let's take care of those who are closer to the trying to break even or poverty line as opposed to anybody else.
Ms. Stokes? Thank you. Mr. Attorney Taberson, the motion that I have, if we need to clear it up, that's fine. We want to leave the discretion with the mayor's office administration, because y'all see the numbers, crunch the numbers, y'all would know where we at, what we need to do.
Okay.
We want to make sure we start giving pay raises. But all discretion's in y'all ballpark and, and...
Okay. And I think I speak on behalf of the administration when I say this, if the discretion is in this administration, our focus is gonna be on the lower-paid individuals. I've said that. And by the way, the mayor is expected here, he was, he's at Mississippi College School of Law for an engagement, but I do expect him here about 2:30 or so. I'm fine with that, Councilman Stokes, you did articulate the discretion. I think I've articulated how the discretion would be used, and I say that because I don't want somebody coming back saying, why didn't you get my raise? I want y'all to know, if they didn't get a raise based on discretion of my leadership, it's because they were already a higher-paid individual. They may be underpaid, but they're already a higher-paid individual.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, and this is...
Well, we gotta dispose of this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any more questions about Councilman Stokes' amendment? Or Mr. Parkinson?
Can you please explain the work that the administration has already built into the budget as it relates to pay raises? Is there any already? Does this budget reflect any pay raises already? I remember you talking at one point about the custodial staff, or can you, can you bring us up to speed on, does the budget that we have in front of us reflect any pay raises already?
The only pay raises that the budget, to my knowledge, the only pay raises the budget reflects are the custodial staff that I specifically mentioned and made sure that we took care of that in public works. I don't know of any other pay raises that have been put in the budget. Finance, make an answer to that more specifically. I'm not aware of any, and my direction has been not to do any. So, Councilman Stokes' amendment as offered would be the first across the board or any other raise other than custodians.
First, I have a logistical question. We were just passed a copy of the, is this the same? We just received two... Okay, it's the same thing.
We got two.
It's the same.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, I just have a logistical question on the nature of the amendment. Is, is it, I fully support pay raises, especially for the people who, who most need it. Are we able to make such an amendment without saying exactly how much money or it comes from or to? Is, is it encouraging the administration to look at pay raises, or what is the, what is, if I could just get a little bit of clarity on the amendment itself, I apologize, I'm just not sure I follow.
Let Mr. Stokes respond, and then you, Mr. Peters.
I was gonna say, I may have a solution between those two, but I'll let Mr. Stokes.
What I, what I was gonna say is that, yesterday, we voted to give the mayor the authority to merge departments and help save money, and I think some of that would come from some of the mergers and everything else. Again, we live in a tight, tight budget. You can't use fund balance money because it's not reoccurring. Any monies that we give with raises must be reoccurring money. That money got to come every year, blase blase. That way, their rates won't be fluff. So, I think with the direction that the city's trying to head, by getting our finances in order, reducing down, cutting some of the fat, those at the bottom or those that the mayor's office will foresee getting an increase, will be a sustainable increase. At the same time, the Budget Chair is qualified and capable that they'll keep watching the monies as we go through the year. I can't really foresee any major increases in our money coming from sales, tax, or other areas. So, that's why we got to tighten our budget, tighten our belts, and make sure that whatever we do, we just don't have money to waste any longer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments, colleagues?
I have a question. How much is left in the grand golf fund after the lights and everything's been paid for?
660.
I'd just rather get it from her.
I'm sorry, I was repeating what Mr. Jackson said.
I heard him, thank you. I thought they were saying pay 660. 600,000, all right. Is any of that allocated toward anything else, like street sweepers or nothing? Okay. All right. I know Mr. Hartley had some requests dealing with that. The restricted fund is what, 7.5%? Is there any carryover left? Is there any carryover?
I think the order hadn't been done.
They should have told us a little something.
I would have to go run it to find out exactly what it is, but yes, there will be some carryover.
All right, and is, is what's in the carryover enough to cover or help pay for our bond requirements? The bond requirements?
Yes.
You looked me in the eye now, okay. All right, I appreciate that, Ms. Sharon.
I'm not sure you two were on the same page, maybe y'all were and I'm not.
I know she looked me in the eyes, so I'm trusting her.
When you say carryover, you meant carryover to 7.5% or carryover...
The unrestricted, the unrestricted.
Carryover, okay. You understood it?
Oh, she knew, she knew. I believe in her skill set, let's see. All right, that's all I have, thank you. Any more questions or comments? All right, Mr. Hartley?
I wanted to go ahead and make a motion.
But we gotta still vote on...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know you read it, I'm coming straight to you. All right, so we have the amendment on the floor, all in favor of the amendment.
Seven zero, very good. All right. All right, next.
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to make a motion that we go ahead and allocate 2.5 million from the general fund into the street cleanup and blight control equipment. And this would be minus any equipment that's already budgeted, but...
Minus, you mean in addition to?
No, no. There's some equipment that has already been budgeted, just subtract that from that 2.5 million, okay?
Okay.
And, and the reason being is, again, I think this should be a priority of budget, of public works. You know, we've, you know, and our first responders, we, we respond to them, and they need it. But this will help decrease the amount, hopefully just decrease the amount of requests to our first responders if we can clean up. So, I'm asking that my colleagues, if you would join me in, in allocating 2.5 million from the general fund. It could be paid back once we do the auction and the garage sale and the yard sale and everything else. But this is important for our city. Can I get a second?
Second, I've got a question too.
Been moving in properly second. Questions or comments, Mr. Foot?
Yes, sir. So, the number, do we have a dollar amount that we're subtracting from the 2.5 million?
No, we don't have that. I'm, again, I'm building an in where they can go back and assess...
I just, I'm trying, I'm just trying to keep track of the money we're voting for. So, we're not actually voting for 2.5 million, we're voting for 2.5 million less, the other stuff that's already been budgeted.
That's correct.
So, if, is there somebody that can tell us what that number is?
I'm seeing a, shaking a head back there.
One moment, Councilman. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Speaking to Mr. Hartley's amendment, having spoken with Brandon, I don't think we can give you a number of what is in the pipeline ordered, we're not comfortable saying that, but I'm gonna make a suggestion, having talked with Brandon. If you could change that number to 1.5 million instead of 2.5 million... If you could change that number to one point five million instead of two point five million, I think we could find one point five million for public works equipment.
So move. Let, let him respond, y'all.
No, sir. I, I would say if you could find that equipment that you've already budgeted for and subtract that. If there's anything out there, especially any of those trucks or, or dozers or anything that's, uh, that's, uh, you know, two hundred plus thousand, then subtract that from it. But this is essential stuff, and, um-
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yes.
I got a lot of central bills at the House that I can't always pay either.
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to balance, let me make this clear. From an administration standpoint, you've got police, fire, and public works. If a city can't do those three things, the city isn't operating. We tend to be, if not in the best place, stable on police and fire. We've all figured out over the last two months, we are deficient in public works. We fully support that. But I'm also cautious about the fact that, as Councilman Stokes alluded to, all of this is numbers that none of us are willing to build our own financial houses on. And so I don't want you allocating money beyond what my finance people say they're comfortable with. That's why I came back with one point five. I agree there should be a number in there every year, and over the next four years, we ought to be able to look back at this term and say, we have rebuilt our heavy equipment and what we do on public works.
Yes, sir. And look, and I appreciate your analogy of your home. But the first thing you're gonna take out is the electric bill, house note, and other things. The first thing that people are paying for is the maintaining of their streets and their communities. That's the first thing, and their safety, okay? And so, having said that, I will work with you. You find that one point five million, and we target it towards cleanup sites of roads. We target it towards getting in there with abandoned properties that the city owns. And even working with the state. I spoke with the, Mr. Chaney with Secretary of State's office yesterday. They have money that can be added. Uh, I think they have a cap, but he said that a lot of folks aren't applying, and so City of Jackson has the first dibs on that money. That was by law the first of July. So this is a clear and present thing, this isn't something that needs to be put off. We are, we will gain money, it's an investment, and our, and, and, and a, a lot is at stake here when I, when I ask for that request. But this is part of making our city whole. Let's look at the one point five million plus what's already in the budget.
All right, Ms. Clay?
I was just saying, one point five plus what's already in the budget.
So is this, he amending his motion?
Yes, um, I'd like to amend my motion to reflect the figure of one point five million instead of two point five.
Second.
In addition to what's already in the budget.
We're good? I got a second?
Yes.
All right, second, I've been moving it properly, second, any questions or comments about this amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? I love a good compromise, thank you, Mr. Hartley.
Let me say this, Mr. President, because I, I feel Mr. Hartley, I don't just hear him.
Oh, we all do, I think.
Also, we'll take it that as we begin looking towards next year's budget, which starts quite frankly October first, not next summer, we should be planning on repeating, and if possible, increasing this kind of commitment towards our public works equipment. So I hear that loud and clear. I hear this isn't a one-time thing, that this may be one-time money we find, but y'all expect us to make this a recurring priority.
Yes, and I, and I, and I appreciate you working with us on this, and I know you get it. I know you get it, but every meeting, every town hall, every community meeting, every time I go out late at night to talk to the people, this is what I'm getting. And then I, when I promise them something and then don't deliver, it reflects badly upon the city. This is an investment I'm hoping that can stir economic development, and we can help retain our people in our communities. So I appreciate you working with us on that.
Well, I appreciate you working with the administration as well. I think we definitely have the same policy goal, and if we can continue just like this, working together. Of course, you voted yesterday to give us authority to pull our parks and rec grounds crews over to public works. I've already sat down with public works leadership, and we're working on what those reconstituted crews are like. I've got a meeting with the parks and rec superintendents on Monday to let them know what's coming and that their job duties will be different and broader. So we understand this is a priority. We're already taking steps based on the authority you gave us yesterday, and we will follow through with the new one point five million.
Yes, again, as I guess putting on my chairman head of public works committee, I wanted to thank you for what happened yesterday. Yesterday was monumental. It showed the folks that we were, we're hand in hand, working together. And I wanted to follow up by asking, are there going to be equipment, any additional needs with this collaboration?
Can't answer that yet. I'm hoping that the equipment, the three million dollars that you've looked at, that Mr. Caldwell has already planned for along with his leadership, I think that equipment will be the equipment these crews need. Now, once we assemble crews, if we find more equipment that's needed, we're gonna let you know. But we, we'll have some equipment that they're bringing with us that y'all had previously bought that's now exclusively for parks. And that equipment we can also use in public works. So, um, as we assemble crews, the other thing we're gonna have to do, and we'll be coming back with a proposal on this, we're gonna have to, uh, pay the money and get some of these folks CDLs or heavy equipment licenses. My proposal will be the administration's proposal is that we will find the money somewhere. We do that, we have them sign an agreement with the city by which they repay that by staying with the city for a defined amount of time, say thirty-six months. And if you leave early, if it's a nine thousand dollar license, you leave after two years, you owe us one year on that. When I was city attorney, we did that with law enforcement. We need to do the same thing, we need to invest in our public works folks, and then get them to return by committing back to us. And so those are types of things we'd like to get in place before we go further with equipment. If we do this right, Councilman Hartley, I think next year we're talking about very specific equipment we need based on the reconstituted crews and the results we've seen or not seen.
Thank you. Uh, let's take what's in that, with that three million dollars, I talked to Mr. Caldwell about, uh, some kind of machine that he, he mentioned about cleaning a ditch. He said it's about seventy-five thousand dollars. I know there's a really bad ditch taking over Bayless, Shady Oaks, and moving all the way back down through war three. I hope that will be on y'all's list of purchase. All right, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Turn to Taverson.
Yes, sir.
Keeping in mind that, uh, this deadline is Monday, and we really can't do too much with the budget today.
Yes, sir.
Anything we try to do, it's gonna reflect back on whether we timely file and everything. Knowing that we, they have not completed the audit. However, we still believe we're gonna have some money fund balance. I'm hoping that we can find a way, and I know it's got to be reoccurring for salaries and things, that we can maybe find two million dollars. If that's extreme, again, y'all discretion, then we get a million to police, a million to fire. I want to get police five million. People talking about their concern about crime, we got to show something in the budget. And I don't know if y'all already put things in the budget for police and fire, but we got to have some money in there that is not going for direct salaries. I don't know if y'all have money in the budget, I think the mayor mentioned he want to do something like they deal with the fees. If we bring on some officers, they'll pay for three, and we start paying after that, they'll pay three years, I think. But we need to show some money in this budget that's just not fluff. Not just money in the sky that ain't there. And fund balance will be real money. Keeping in mind, once the audit is done and all the bills are paid, and I'm not, I'm just talking about one year fund back, I think we got two years in audit that we're trying to catch up on, it's two or three.
Two.
Yeah, so it's-
About to be three.
Yeah. So I just want us to have something that we have a true commitment for money for police and fire. And you can guide me on how this. My motion would me, would read that, uh, once the audit is complete and we receive a fund balance report, that we could try to find one million for police, one million for fire for this year. We are for the intention to increase it next year's budget, which should not be as tight. So move.
Second.
As we move to properly, second, any questions or comments? Now, Councilman Stokes, does that include civilians?
I, I'm not trying to put strings to it because we're talking about money, I, I want to make sure that the administration can maneuver, do what they think needs to be done. If we start putting strings where they did, they can mess up whatever they trying to accomplish.
We tend to get beat up when they don't mention the civilians.
Yes, sir.
We say, oh, no. We, everybody, we hear you, everybody.
Everybody, everybody.
Everybody. All right, very good, all right. Any more questions or comments about this amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. That was two million. All right, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, uh, this amendment is from, um, on the budget book, it's on page ninety-six to ninety-seven. For care and maintenance of public buildings, if you look at this, the total amount that currently budgeted for ca- care and maintenance of public buildings is two point four four five million. Of that, uh, seven hundred and nine thousand five fifty is salaries, and including benefits. It ends up being one point one three five million for, for salaries and benefits. And you have, um, supplies and materials end up being, uh, seven hundred and nine thousand. One thing that I don't see in here at all is any money towards, um, HVAC equipment, which is one of the biggest problems we've got in the City of Jackson, as everybody knows. The, um, so what I'm proposing as an amendment is to add an additional one million dollars specifically for HVAC equipment to the care and maintenance of public buildings, which would bring the total, uh, budget for the, for that, um, part of the city budget to three million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Obviously, that would be some sufficient money to fix the legal department's HVAC problems that is causing them to consider moving. But, uh, that money needs to be there for, uh, all the repairs that we need in a lot of our older facilities, whether it's the arts center or the Iamar Hall or whatever. So that's what I'm proposing is a million dollar addition, uh, for, for HVAC equipment to the building, care and maintenance of our public buildings, where in the past we have really not put sufficient money in there to take proper care of our facilities.
I'd like to second that for discussion.
Okay, as we move it properly, second. Yes, Ms. Tim?
Mr. Foot, if you'd look on page, uh, one thirteen.
One thirteen, okay.
You'll see seven hundred and ten thousand.
One thirteen, hold on a second. Okay.
That's where your, um, HVACs are gonna be budgeted, right there.
Okay, so, um-
That's your repair maintenance money right there.
Okay. So this is under what category?
It's under Fund One O Forty-seven.
I'm saying, but, but I'm confused that that would, why, why is that, why is that not included under the care and maintenance of public buildings?
Because HVACs just wouldn't fall under care and maintenance, they could be anywhere in the city. So it's under, uh, Fund Forty-seven, which is repair replacement fund for the city.
Under forty-seven, I'm looking for it, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
So so far, so far in twenty twenty-five, we spent a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, is that right? Is that what I'm looking at, am I looking the right line there?
No, in twenty twenty-five, you spent eight hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Wait a minute, I'm-
And you all, and, yeah, you have an actual.
Now, buildings-
You have an actual one hundred and fifty-four, eight sixty-two, thirty-one, it was eight hundred and seventy-two budgeted, I'm sorry.
Okay, so what does IOTBE stand for?
It's Other Than Buildings.
Other Than Buildings, so, so when this budget document was printed, um, it had one fifty-four, eight sixty-two that had been used so far of the eight hundred and seventy-two. That means we got, well, how come that money was not accessed by the legal department to fix their HVAC?
I hear that question as well.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I mean, this is crazy, people are getting, packing up and getting ready to move when we got money in our budget to almost six hundred thousand dollars available. That's really, you know, um, we're not communicating well across the system. If, if the money's there and then we're being told by the legal department that you have to move out because the money to fix their HVACs didn't work, this is, now, I'm, I wonder, I mean, so you, you plan that seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, okay? If that's there and we're planning on that, and we've still got five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars remaining at this point in time, assuming that the one fifty-four number hasn't changed since this budget book was printed.
Right, you have the seven hundred and ten remaining.
No, the seven hundred and ten is what's budgeted for next year, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly, I'm sorry, exactly. But, um, to kind of answer your question on the legal, that building belongs to JRA, not to the City of Jackson.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, but JRA belongs to the City of Jackson.
That's what Mr. Foot-
Because I agree with that, okay?
Yeah, but they don't, they don't like to share their money.
They're asking us for money.
Yep. Okay, so the-
Councilman Foot, let, let me just say this. You're actually a little right, there was money sitting in a line, there has been a lack of communication, the AC could have been addressed. You just pointed that out, I've just caught that when you pointed that out, uh, when Ms. Tim showed it to us. The only real question would be, what credit does the city get in its arrangement with JRA for fixing their air conditioning the second time? Because we did that when Sarah O'Reilly Evans was here. Now granted, it's been almost twenty years, it's time to do it again, but we need to make sure we get something back from JRA. But as a practical matter, I'm with you, if that money was available, that should have been clear so we could just address, y'all could decide whether to address the problem or how to proceed.
I, I guess my, my point is that if the legal department, it's HVAC in work, they need to let chain of command know that the HVAC needs to be replaced, and the chain of command, somebody in the chain of command needs to know that there's seven hundred thousand dollars.
Councilman Foot?
But you, you know that-
Hold on, there's been no chain of command. And so I'm not, I, I think when the, I think when the city attorney is over here saying he doesn't have AC, he's telling what he perceives as the chain of command, which is the governing authorities.
Right, okay.
I agree.
All right, so this seven hundred and ten, that's good that we've got that budget for next year. But it needs to be, we need to be functional in our, if this is, if we're over here taking care of building and equip, maintaining building equipment, they need to know where all the funds are that are, that are available to fix, whether it's HVAC or whatever. Okay, I, I will, uh, in that case, I'll move, remove that amendment, that proposed amendment and move, move my next amendment. So you withdraw, you don't wanna, you withdraw your amendment? Yeah, I'll withdraw my amendment, but we gotta reorganize the, the, um- Okay. I'll move on to my next amendment. Okay, one second, that, do we pay JRA rent for that space? No.
No.
Okay, well, something should be able to be worked out between the two bodies. So- They own the hood, hood building too, we all pay rent there. Like they got us. Will we paying rent in six three three?
Have asked that question. So the agreement, city attorney's office did pay rent to JRA until about two thousand six or seven. The air conditioning went out in the city legal office at that time. JRA did not have any money to repair the air conditioning. City Attorney Sarah Evans came and asked the council for money to repair the air conditioning chillers. The council granted that money contingent on the fact that JRA had to give city legal a credit for repairs they did for the building to offset the rent. Every year I was city attorney, we had a rent line of about thirty thousand dollars, and we just spent that on repairs every year, and so we never paid-
Hey, everybody, excuse us, excuse us, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Now, I think also there's a legitimate question. We're paying rent to six three three, and I believe the city has invested in some upgrades at six three three. We really need to have a conversation with JRA about them, if they don't want their assets, transfer those assets to the city, and then y'all will probably feel more comfortable- and then y'all will probably feel more comfortable repairing and upgrading them. And so I think that is a broader discussion that needs to be had with J R A, J R A.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, to follow up, uh, turn the tables and saying, uh, it was always understood over the years that J R A was just a arm of the city and council and everything. Pardon garages and everything, union station. Uh, we always approved the money for J R A to make all the improvements. Keeping in mind, they knew it was for us. And so somewhere down the line, things have changed with some different board members. And, uh, sometimes that happened in government, but what we normally tell them, we're disband you.
Ooh.
Yeah, we're disband you, that way you won't exist. And then it's amazing when you say that, then things fall back in line like they used to be. But, uh, turn the tables and seen it all, he, he been around the city and, you know, the pardon garage, all that building that you see in Jackson around downtown, that's J R A. When they are thanks was the mayor through the, through the city and the council. So even when you talk about the convention center that the state was taken to turn the tables and Sarah Riley ever stopped them, um, that's property that, uh, came through J R A in the city. So money comes through the city, we sense it to J R A. It's not like money come straight to J R A, it come through the city. And, uh, that's what has happened over the years. It's not something that just happened. But I have a motion to be read.
Well, Mr. Foot was not.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, pages two, in the work, in the, in the budget book, two thirteen to two sixteen. With the manner posting, posting dear to the heart of Councilman Harley. Uh, if you turn to page two thirteen, this is, uh, the zoo in Livingston Park. Total budget, uh, is, I'm showing down here, uh, total budget is one million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, I believe it is. And of that, the sewer line, water and sewer line is sixty-seven thousand dollars. Well, unfortunately, we're way behind them. The zoo's way behind them paying its, uh, water bill to Jackson Water. They owe, and so what I'm recommending in order to get straight with Jackson Water that we take three million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents and give it to the zoo to pay Jackson Water for the water bill that, uh, of that amount that's due Jackson Water. I think that, um, I'm not sure where the money comes, comes from, but that, that's what the motion I'm making.
For the, for the purpose of discussion, I'd like to second that motion.
All right, it's been moved in properly second. Questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Um, turn the tables and if you research that situation, then we, we need your help because the zoo appealed that water bill. And when they appealed that water bill, uh, it was, by the city council, they, uh, reduced it to the correct amount. I'm saying that because we had numerous of people who appealed these water bills and now they've been charged by Jackson Water. And Jackson Water stated at first, they're not going to charge people from back water bills. But now they've been charged for back water bills. But the zoo had already, uh, this issue about this water bill when the city was over the water had come up and it was understood that the zoo did not owe that water bill. And the appeal process that we had in place, they went through it and it was forgiven. Now, they couldn't just say it was free water, but they showed where it was, uh, adjusted. That's the word they use. They adjusted the water bill to eliminate the part that they didn't owe. But evidently somebody didn't keep record straight or something. But a lot of people went through the appeal process because people were getting water bill, they were crazy. Ten thousand, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. And there was a appeal process where they could correct.
Mayor responding, Council President.
Yes, sir.
There's several things that we need to make sure everybody's on the same page, actually. One, I agree with Councilman Stokes. I don't know that there's a valid appeal process right now for water bills and I'm hearing that as much as y'all are because I try and be out in the community. I can research the zoo passed water bill, see if there was an adjustment or not. But I can tell you, I got an email from Ted Henneffin yesterday and apparently he got elected just like the seventy y'all and the mayor, so eighty y'all. He says he's not going to remit the garbage fees back to the city. He's just going to hold it to cover all of our water bills.
I see.
So I would suggest you not pursue that amendment, Councilman Foot, because he thinks he can offset water bills on his own. Um, I don't know what that's going to do with, with the budget folks and paying the garbage contract. I will tell you, we already, um, have had a preliminary discussion. I've not yet been able to have this with the mayor about decoupling our billing for sanitation from Mr. Henneffin. Um, I'm not comfortable with him unilaterally deciding over people who have run for office and been elected, whether it's Mr. Pike or Mr. Henneffin. I understand I'm appointed and to these folks need to understand they were appointed, whether it was by Judge Wingate or J R A board or whomever, in that y'all and the mayor ran for office. So I, I would suggest not approaching it that way. Looks like we're going to end up over there before Judge Wingate arguing about the proposed offset. Secondly, thirdly, I want to change to the actual situation in the zoo. I went out there today. I've walked through there. I understand why we're losing money. We have a moat around our monkeys. All of our moats at the zoo are natural bottom moats. Erosion has occurred, the moat has widened, evaporation occurs, the water comes out of the widened moat. And so we just leave a hydrant running to fill the moat. We can move the chimpanzees into the enclosure that is at the zoo and take them offline and turn off the fire hydrant. That's my intention, but I want to discuss it with the mayor and the council because the chimpanzees will be offline. They will be humanely cared for. They just won't be able to be seen with where their other facility is versus where you walk. We've got to do this so we can at least stop the water bills going forward. There are two other leaks at the zoo. One is a pipe leak that we're looking at that ought to be a fairly minimal repair. And then there is a leak in where the ducks are in a pond there as well. Talking with our zookeeper, walking around with the folks that are there, I think you could get a handle on the zoo for, uh, in terms of the leaks and the repairs and some structural improvements for somewhere between four hundred thousand and a million. A million being if you wanted to, uh, redo some of the, uh, exhibits, have a petting zoo, do some things, get attendance up. My suggestion is be, again, I've not talked with the mayor. My suggestion would be we look at the recent forty million dollars that was borrowed. Uh, we know we talked about some, some of that for drainage issues. So we could at least fix the moat around the chimpanzees and the other leaks with that money. But it may be worth this body considering, um, and again, give me another couple of weeks to get this on paper and before you. I think there's a, there's a footprint that would allow for a smaller but healthy zoo. And I'd like to bring that footprint forward and allow y'all to decide what to do with that. If you decide to go that, uh, direction, we're going to have to find some new money that's just not in the budget. Uh, but I would suggest we look at that bond and see what other options are out there. Uh, there are some other things that we have not aggressively pursued, which could help with Livingston Park. We need to pursue some sort of, uh, state wildlife grant that would allow for us to build a walking trail where the train is. We could take out the train track. It's an eighty, twenty match, put in a walking trail and buy a train that has rubber tires and runs on the walking track. And we could still have a train feature, but we could get an eighty, twenty match to do that. So we've got some things, and I apologize for not getting to this sooner in our budget discussions, but I walked away cautiously optimistic that we can save the zoo. I'm also absolutely telling you, we've just got to take the chimpanzees offline, close the hydrant, and whether we immediately fix that or not, we need to let the natural moat drain. Apparently, ten years ago, somebody did study for the city on this. And the studies just got buried, so. So my immediate recommendations are turn off the fire hydrant, let the moat drain, and then we can figure out where the money comes to repair the moat. But we will not inhumanely treat the chimpanzees and will stop increasing the water bill.
Okay, the, um, there's another option.
Mr. Harley, hold on.
Real well out there for that water. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, concerning, concerning the water. Uh, you know, Jackson Water took over, what, maybe two, three years ago? Uh, before that, wouldn't this be classified as a city facility? And we have the power over our own billing to that facility? Why is this different? When they took over, now they're going back and charging us for all that. I'm just, I'm just wondering if I don't understand something here. But if, if, in fact, this is a city facility, why are, why didn't we dismiss those charges before it got to Jackson Water? I mean, just, just a question.
The, um, if you go back about six years ago, the, um, the administration sued the Friends of the Zoo for an unpaid water bill of a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the Friends of the Zoo went away because of that lawsuit.
Okay.
So, you know, it's a mess and, you know, it's, uh, I, I'm going to remove my, because of the discussion, I'd like to go ahead and go to my next amendment. I'll just pull, pull that amendment.
Okay.
Cause I don't think.
I withdraw my second.
All right, next. Well, Mr., Mr. Foot.
Okay.
Let's go to Councilman Stokes.
Sure.
Then we can come back to you.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, Miss Teaves, I'm, I'm not going to try to measure this budget at all, keeping time in mind and Monday, things got to be at the standard and Jackson just can't be late or near about late. Uh, I want to look at fund balance if we could. And I know it's only so much we have in the fund balance. But I would like to put, if we could, two, two million dollars in the clerk, clerk of council's budget. That money, from appropriations come sometimes, when this council issue disappeared, never make it, uh, to the area that it's supposed to go for. Uh, we were looking at five hundred thousand in, um, ward five concerning the zoo. If it's not there, something has been worked out, that's fine. Five hundred thousand award six concerning the possibility of state, um, property that they want to turn to the city. And, uh, one point, the remainder, we'll say, um, to go for council members. Uh, things that some councilmen may have in their ward or other things, which would put us right at two million dollars. Um, and again, that's depending on fund balance, what we are with fund balance. Uh, I would rather do it that manner than, uh, than council member Isaiah mentioned about the seven point five. Sometimes years ago, they reduced seven point five down and then they brought it back up. And, uh, it's always an effort and I don't know if there's other things that council members thinking about. That's why I would rather deal with fund back what we have. We don't quite get all of that back in fund balance that we can make the adjustments, but we want to have it in the clerk of council budget.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly second. Any questions or comments about this, this amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose? Six, one? All right, very good. So Mr. Foot didn't want any. Is that, is that what, is that what, is that, all right. Mister, Mister, uh, wait, wait, you have another amendment, right? Go ahead. That's what happened, Mr. Foot, then we'll go to Mr. Harley.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. This amendment, uh, is, um, based on page ninety-four in the budget book under.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four page, that's under public works.
See. Now, colleagues, let, let me say this while Mr. Foot's looking this up. I know it always helps to butter up your position, but the deadline is Monday. So when these amendments done, voted up or down, however, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So this, this is, uh, on the line item on, on about, uh, ten down on, on the, um, page ninety-four of the budget book, under, um, paved streets. Uh, it's got, this is materials, supplies and materials for paved street. You'll see that the asphalt line, sixty-three, twenty, uh, had, back in twenty twenty-four, it had four hundred and eighty-five thousand. In twenty twenty-five, it originally had three hundred and twenty thousand. That was lowered, revised to two hundred and sixty, of which we spent two hundred and fifty. And, uh, we budgeted for next year, three hundred and twenty thousand. And of course, with this new agreement with the, um,
County.
With the county, which I think is a great deal, um, taking advantage of their, their crews and workforce and equipment. Uh, I want, on, my amendment is to increase the three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-fourth dollars, um, allocated for asphalt to, by one million dollars, uh, to make that one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars for asphalt so we can take full advantage of the, of our, um, relationship with the county at this point in time and, and, um, resurface a whole lot more roads and fill all even more potholes than we were expecting to.
As far as sake of discussion, I'd like to second that motion.
All right, it's been moved in properly second. Uh, questions or comments? But I do have a question. We purchased about a million dollars in asphalt this year, right?
That was seven hundred thousand, where you did a hundred thousand for each ward. But you also don't forget you have the one meal that you adopted that's dedicated to just that, which is one point two million dollars.
Right, but we purchased, I remember two items for us around five hundred thousand each for asphalt. Is any of that left? Has it been used? Has it been acquired?
What's left?
Yeah, what's left?
The budget book says two hundred and fifty thousand for that, for this line here. There may be another line there.
It was in three seventy-two and no, it has not been spent.
Okay. So is it with this agreement with the county, is the county, because I know they have the manpower, we have the, the, the asset. So are they going to use what we have not purchased to go do the work?
My understanding, Fund Three Seven Two, that has one point two million, is we could use that for the very things that Councilman Foot and you are saying.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Best in Fund Two Thirteen.
Okay.
And we also have three seventy-seven.
Okay. Well, Mr. Foot.
Okay. Well, can I go to my, my next amendment then?
Well, you gotta, you gotta.
No, I withdraw my second.
Okay. I'll, I'll pull that then since, you know, assuming we were going to actually spend that money and not let it sit on the.
Well, I was going to say, you know, we find ourselves in an interesting position. We're budgeting on numbers we don't know on a tight budget and yet we have money sitting in lines that we haven't used. Do the very things that the citizens want us to do. So you're right, uh, Councilman Foot. I'm, I'm urging fiscal prudence, obviously, but I fully acknowledge that if y'all have budgeted the money, there's no reason for us to be sitting here in the eleventh month of the year without having spent the money. And so we've got to do a better job doing that as well.
Along with fiscal prudence, we need asphalt prudence too.
I have a question.
Ms. Clay?
So you're saying we can spend that money now between now and the end of the year?
I would not suggest that.
No, but I'm just asking a question because before the last administration left, they said that each, each of us knew that money and they asked us for a list of names, I mean, a list of streets, et cetera, to do it, okay? So if the money wasn't spent and the money is there, why can't we spend it now?
I think we would need legal to look at that. You're in the last quarter of this budget year, which is a carryover quarter. which is a carryover quarter from a previous administration. And so there are some spending restrictions for this quarter.
Yes, sir.
And I would want, I've not looked at that in a number of years. I would want legal to tell us whether we could really spend that or not.
But once the new administration takes office, we can spend that money in the last quarter, that twenty-five percent. And it was no more than the amount that was allocated. We got the rule. Yeah, so, so is.
You got a rule. I'm concerned about the interplay of state statutes on this.
Right, I understand that.
I'm also concerned that if you try and spend a chunk of money with twenty days left, left in this budget year, we don't know what's been spent all this year. We, we walk ourselves into further complications for an audit.
Okay, this is what I'm saying. If you guys are saying this money is sitting out there and we know this money is in account and this money was allocated to be spent and we are within the statutory rule, why can't we go ahead in the last twenty days and fix all these streets since we got an agreement with the county? We got the money to buy the asphalt, roll it out and do it.
County can't fix all these streets in twenty days.
No, I know we can't fix them all in twenty days. I understand that. I understand, but it fixes many as we can with what we have.
Let's hear from Legal.
Um, under the state's procurement law, things like road paving have to be bid out and that term is three weeks. That's we advertised for three consecutive weeks. So we, we put out a request for bids today. It would not close until after the end of this week.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hartley.
Yeah, just one other, uh, interjection. I believe we took out, we had seventy thousand, I believe, or a hundred thousand for each ward at one time. I believe some of that money was taken out for asphalt. Am I correct? Okay, so how much is left?
They did nothing with it.
Well, they, they borrowed from that or they got from that to put it over into purchasing some asphalt or something. Uh, it came before council last two or three months, I believe. Do you have any record of what's to remain in balance? Mr. Melonbecker, I think, uh, you were.
On page one twenty-two, you'll see those hundred thousand dollars.
What page? One twenty-two? One twenty-two?
You'll, you'll see what's been rebudgeted for twenty-six.
Which line is that?
You'll see ward one, ward two, ward three, ward four.
So, okay, it's still showing a hundred thousand. Please correct me if I'm wrong, maybe.
You're not wrong.
It's the old man, old, old man thinking here, but Mr. Melonbecker, I believe that, um, uh, he came up and made a presentation about removing, taking part of this money away and investing in, in asphalt or something. Is, am I correct here or did I miss something?
I think what they asked for was it to be moved out of being contractual to be able to be moved into where the city crews could.
So it wasn't actually spent. It was just moved into the category to be spent.
It was out of category for the, our city crews to use. And we had ran out of money in, uh, Public Works' budget. So we were using that money to go ahead and keep repairing.
Okay, so, but the balance is still there then? Excellent, thank you.
All right. I think he's saying it rolled over.
Yeah, it rolled over.
You said it's spent.
So starting October first, we have a hundred thousand dollars that we can spend each ward. Is that what you're saying?
It's one-time money.
Starting October first, we have a hundred thousand dollars each ward, per ward. Wait, what now? I'm not interested in them last years. I want you to tell me what I can do October first.
October first, you'll have a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
So I can get my dish clean? Newport Street, Idaho Street, Utah Street, Kings Road, Queens Road, that same dish, I can get that clean.
Now, it's just a comment to Mr. Tavies, an attorney.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure, chief, whatever it call.
Any of his friends.
C O, okay. Um, it, it, just, just that one thought. And I applaud you for saying that. And we have to keep the purpose, that hundred thousand dollars was appropriate two years ago now. And nothing, so that's gonna be critical, is that we follow these things from crater to grave, okay? And getting it done. Two years and I got all these potholes in my ward? Yeah. So, um, but my other thing is I, I know, um, you know, as, and you know, and Ms. Thames know, she was my Public Works Physical Officer. Uh, we stash some money back. We kind of pad a little bit. So if we can kind of keep that to a minimal, it'll be well appreciated. Uh, and I know the administration is looking, but I'm just saying, old habits. You're trying to survive out there in your divisions and your departments and you're like, well, we need to do something over here. And, and, and then you, you put a little bit back, so.
Mr. Hartley. I wish I had that old habit this budget season.
Everybody did it.
I may be trying to hide it from you next year if I can find it. But I think we're all gonna be much better versed on municipal budgets about next year.
Yes, sir.
And I would say this, one of the challenges that I've encountered despite being at the city for a decade is we have changed the formatting of our budget.
Thank you.
And we've changed it significantly from how we used to do it when I was here previously. We're all gonna be much better versed going forward.
Okay, and a follow-up question. Is there any money in this budget for a diversity study? Uh, are we looking at, are we looking at sharing diversity information with the airport?
We, we are, we can share diversity information. We don't need a study to do that. If the airport wants diversity information from us, we can gather that and do that. We've not funded a study, uh, because my recommendation not to do so. We can address the goals that a diversity study would get us without having to do a study. One, the mayor can issue an executive order when our EVO ordinance sunsetted, um, fifteen or so years ago. I simply did what they now do in Washington. I did an executive order for Mayor Johnson and we carried on the same program via executive order. We don't need a diversity study for an executive order.
Okay.
We don't need a diversity study to share the information about whether vendors are local, whether they're minority, whether they're women, et cetera. So all the goals that you want done, I think we can achieve without the study. And we've tried to put that money back elsewhere in the budget.
And I agree, I think that's the right approach. Can we at least, uh, get all that information into our planning department, uh, from the airport?
Yes.
And, um.
And we should be sharing that information. And I know the state of Mississippi shares that information. If you call MDOT, uh, they'll share theirs with us and, and vice versa. We should be doing that.
And again, I think the goal is to keep us from having, I think, uh, we have like three to five percent of our contracts and stuff going out to, uh, to minority businesses or African-American businesses in the city. Uh, uh, I may be wrong on that figure, but it's a very, very low amount and, uh, we need to heighten that.
Oh, I agree. I mean, most of the money's not even going out anywhere other than, say, Hemp Hill. I, I mean, we definitely not spreading our dollars around. We've got vendors who have not been paid, who say they don't want to do business with the city for whatever reason. We've got to restore that confidence. So part of growing that minority participation, and I prefer to call it local Jackson participation, because that's what we're really talking about.
Yes.
Um, it happens to be mostly minorities, but it reflects our population. Uh, we need to do a better job with all of that. And we need to make sure that vendors feel like they have a friendly relationship, not friendly improper, but friendly as if I bid for the work, I'm going to get paid in a timely fashion.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Tavies. Now, colleagues, I would like to get back on task. If you have an amendment without all the butter on the bread, please make your amendment now. Mr. Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, this item is on page seventy-one through seventy-two. This is concerns animal control under JPD. And I had to give some clarification on one of the lines. If you go down here, you look and you see the twenty twenty-five project, projection is zeros down the line. Um, and then it's got, shoot, that's twenty twenty-five, then twenty twenty-six. It's got three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. My understanding, as I read this, if you go back on the first, on page seventy-one, it's got, all the money is three hundred and forty-six thousand, eight seventy-nine, is under other PRO, which means effectively outsourcing. So the council voted a year ago in this budget to outsource animal control. And then the city administration never did it. They never did outsource animal control. And the building, my understanding, is condemned where these animals were kept. And the public's not allowed in there. This is, I've got constituents that are fit to be tied about animal control.
Mr. Foot, Mr. Foot.
And so we need to enforce, the administration needs to enforce the budget as it's outlined right there. Thank you.
What's our motion? What's your amendment, sir? Is there a motion or?
Well, my motion is for the administration to enforce, to outsource the animal control as it's outlined in this budget.
For discussion purposes, I second.
Okay, it's been moving in properly second. I forgot what, what was your amendment again? What's your motion?
So what I understand happened last year is this council made a decision to outsource animal control. And despite making that budgetary decision, um, the city operated as, as it always has. It kept animal control officers on the payroll and kept that in-house and didn't outsource that. As I understand, Councilman Foot's amendment, uh, he's saying, administration, you need to do what we budgeted for y'all to do. Now, speaking to the building, I don't think we use the building. Uh, it is used as a temporary holding facility for animals that are picked up on the weekend because we can't get those over tomorrow or other places on the weekend. So we do use that building for short-term holdings till we can get animals elsewhere. We also have a contract with both Richards and Waste Management that talks about disposal of carcasses. So even if we outsource that, we're gonna have to make sure that we have somebody available, whether that's by contract or in the city to timely pick up carcasses and dispose of them. But however you budget it, this administration will get it done.
Thank you.
So we need to dispose of this motion, however it was.
Okay.
Any questions or comments about the, what you got, you got with the? All right, all in favor?
Well, we both know it.
Yeah. All right, okay, is that seven zero?
No.
No?
Do it again.
All in favor?
Keep that moving. The motion is to, Councilman Foot, move, um, that the administration will outsource animal control as budgeted in, in FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Do we really need a motion?
How do, how do you vote? We gotta dispose of it. Does he withdraw? He can withdraw and leave it, and leave it in it.
I'd like to get a vote for it. I mean, the mayor's already put up a task force to do, to focus on animal control. We just gotta, you know, enforce.
Again, let's count the votes, all in favor. Oppose? Abstain? Okay, I have an amendment. I move to increase that fee back to the four sixty-eight that we put it, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand for animal control. Second. All right, so it's been moving in properly second, and then questions or comments?
Just your rationale.
Well, that's what we budgeted for last time when they were going to outsource it. And so the amount is less this time, but I'd rather put it back since we voted for the administration to go ahead and carry through with it this time. So hopefully they will go ahead and carry through with it this time. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? How you oppose the Mr. Foot after abstaining? Any abstentions? Where's getting it?
The vote was three, one, three.
It was, what?
Three, one, three.
So it fails. All right, not a problem.
Having said that, I think this council has made it clear that they are concerned from constituents about how we're handling animal control.
All right.
We, we get that message loud and clear.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to answer, uh, Councilwoman Parkinson. That's two hundred thousand was budgeted, not two hundred and fifty.
All right, so the question has been called, so that's a motion, we're gonna put that to a vote. Okay, all in favor on the call to question on this? Mr. Stokes, call the question.
Were we voting on that?
He called a question. No, we call, we have to vote because you called a question. We have to vote whether or not to, to end the debate. All right. Is there a second? All right, so it's been moving in properly second, call the question, all in favor? Oppose? All right. We read a vote.
It's already on the floor.
So now we have the item on the floor as amended, even though I tried to help Mr. Foot out with the animal control and he voted against it. I want the record to clearly reflect that.
His intentions were good.
I got some intentions too. All right, so all in favor of this budget as amended? All in favor?
David.
You voted on the budget, Mr. Stokes. Somebody gave Mr. Stokes some good signal. All right, is there anything else to come before, right, you voted on claims and the budget. Is there anything else coming for this body? Hearing none, we are adjourned.